Good evening, Vegas, gentlemen. Again, welcome. It is now six thirty. Today is Tuesday, February eleventh, 2020, and we're at the D pool of elementary cafeteria. I'm gonna call these in order. I want to go to our role card, Dr. Lee. Mrs. Lopez. Mr. Castillo. Mr. Yaral. Mr. Ramiros. And, um, as well, the fellow guys present as well. Uh, Dr. Lee, we have a sound. At this time, I'd like to add one side note. Side notes, um, for the passing of other third grade students. Thank you very much. May she rest in peace and ask for prayers for her family. Section three, approval of minutes. Um, you rate their program on January twenty-seventh, 2020. Well, motion by, uh, please second by, uh, Mrs. Lopez. I would favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion cares. Section four.
Mr. President, at this time, we have the recognition of the student, of the, of the teachers.
Motion by Dr. Lee. Second by Mrs. Lopez. Any discussion? I would favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
I would post aye.
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 Motion cares.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, I'm going along with one of the students. I want to thank the parents here. That was the guys of Mrs. Allen. You just gave away six point seven million dollars savings for our school. As well as the daily sentence, for the teaching of staff. Changing our first year had made differences. But I would make possible for the staff to apply. Begin earlier in the year and then have to wait to later in the year with a grant this budget. These will allow us to improve hiring activities at teachers. Let's let the local salary be a simple to offer before they sign their contract. And so over six point seven million dollars. And we're wanting a notice of change.
And as I learned in committee, there were a lot of programs and incentives that the administrators and the superintendent had in store for us. And I would like Mrs. Mrs. Garza, could you let us know a little bit about what your plans were for those monies?
This, uh, I think Mr. Mr.
Mr. Yaral.
Well, you've had, I think, uh, she, uh, this.
Okay.
Mr. Ramirez deserves the floor the same way you've gotten the floor.
Exactly. I haven't given it to him.
It can't be orchestrated here, sir.
Mr. Yaral, you're, you're out of order, sir.
Okay, but it can be orchestrated.
I haven't given Mr. Ramirez the floor.
Okay, you give Mr. Ramirez the floor.
That's, that's my decision and whenever I want to serve.
Okay, he's gonna get the floor and I'm gonna get it.
Please.
Mr. President, members of the board, committee members. The intent of these funds were to provide our elementary campuses with band instruments, art equipment, a band directors, um, sports, purchase of uniforms, um, the purchase of, um, I'm sorry, a warehouse for our food service director, uh, services because we don't have the storage to, to, uh, store all our goods, uh, that are delivered to our district. Additional cars for our, uh, police department. Also funding the ENRI if, if it were to be approved, the resignation program. We would, uh, use these funds to pay out the percentage, uh, indicated in the plan. If it were to be approved without hindering our, our budget.
And Ms. Garza is, she's, uh, referring to the early resignation initiative, which was also just voted down. It would have allowed any eligible, eligible staff, um, to resign and receive thirty percent of their salary as a token of appreciation for their service and dedication to Rio Grande City CISD. Also, this initiative is a financial benefit to the district by helping us to reduce spending, helping us to decrease the deficit, and most importantly, would not have been paid out of our general funds. It would have come from that additional one times six point seven million dollar savings. And lastly, the STAR Award or Super Teacher Attendants Award was an additional one thousand dollars paid to teachers. We all agree that having our teachers in the classroom is our number one priority. This initiative was to encourage our teachers, um, to have perfect attendance. You may ask where was that money coming from? Well, that money was coming from the, the monies that we spent on substitutes and we all value our substitutes in the classroom. But I think that we would all, we all cherish having our teachers in our classrooms as much as possible. Making these kinds of financial decisions helps us to cut spending, decrease the deficit, and make the district more stable so that we can improve wages and benefits for all of our employees in the long run. Thank you.
I believe these items are a benefit for everybody, our kids, our employees. So I'm not gonna give up on my, on, on our kids and our employees and I'm gonna bring this item, these items again in the next board meeting.
First of all, since ever since we're giving self-serving statements allow us the same opportunity because normally discussion is had before a vote is taken, not afterwards. But since we're giving self-service statements, well, let's do that. What's, I find funny is that you put items on the agenda that are already voted on in the past and yet they, they keep putting them back on as if they're unhappy with the vote, as if they might change and finally get their way. That's interesting. You know what I don't see on the agenda? The bonus proposition that we offered, thousand dollars for auxiliary in Paris, up to forty-five hundred for principals, up to thirty-five hundred for assistant principals and all administration, better pay for all teachers, continuing contracts for teachers. How about three-year contracts for all administration? Let's get politics totally out of the equation. Oh, you don't hear that. It's self-serving. It's convenient. And if they're gonna give self-serving statements, it starts, why not do surveying for Tango? See if the teacher really wanna use DMAC or Tango since it's being, seems to be being forced upon almost the entire school district. Oh, no, it's pick and choose. And yes, Mr. President, you can keep putting the agenda, the same items all over again. But until you incorporate everybody, until you get programs that incorporate every person working in the school district where they all feel loved and appreciated and valued, then maybe, just maybe you'll get the vote that you tried, started to be a switch so badly last time because you raised your wrong hand.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Ramirez, didn't we approve the item?
No, we didn't.
Not to, to make us study, to make us study if we could, if we could afford to give that, uh, that raises our, uh.
To make you study.
Didn't we, didn't we, last board meeting?
Can I speak?
Mr. Yaral.
Okay, let me, let me know when I can speak.
About Tango is in the middle of the year. I've talked to people. I've talked to teachers and principals.
I'm glad you have.
Okay.
I'm glad you have.
Most of them agreed that it's, it's in the middle of the year. We'll do that, uh, survey beginning, uh, twenty-one and beginning, uh, the, the beginning of the next school year.
Why do we have to wait so long to survey the teachers? Why don't you survey them now and find out if they want Tango or not? You know, implementing DMAC is not a big deal. The fact of the matter, like I said, like the other day, we have T tests. That is one of the, uh, things that we go ahead and evaluate, uh, teachers. It used to be done online, now we're gonna do it on paper. We have L packing that's gonna be done in paper, used to be on the other thing. But it's like Mr. Ramirez says, why can't we help everybody? How come we can't go for continuous contracts? How can we go for administrators for three years? How come we can't help the paraprofessionals with a thousand dollars? We have forty million dollars in the bank, but we don't have, uh, having paraprofessionals and auxiliary. How come we can't help the whole teachers? How come the administrative principals got a fifteen hundred dollars, assistants get a thousand dollars? And we have forty million dollars and we can't help them out? I agree with Mr. Mr. Ramirez said, we have to help everybody. It's not, this is not about what you want or what, it's what's best for everybody. And by the way, we're not giving them anything. They've earned every single thing they've worked for.
And talking about politics, Mr. Ramirez, uh, I think, uh, we're the lead, the least people playing politics.
I do wanna, can I please?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Address the board. Uh, Mr. Ramirez, um, as far as the contracts, that has not come up yet. Uh, we're in the near future of discussing contracts. As far as, uh, the items being presented again on the agenda is because we wanted to ha, to have an opportunity to better explain, uh, the reasons why these initiatives we were seeking for the betterment of our school district. As far as, um, Tango and all the other, you know, DMAC, these are products and programs that the superintendent that, uh, is in charge of this school district can move forward with. These are my recommendations. I'm held responsible for the education of these children. I totally agree with what you're saying. Tango and Da, and DMAC provide almost the same, but not quite the same. My concern is children's progress and that, that give us the opportunity to show that utilizing this tool has greatly helped our students. My concern is the education of our students. Yes, Mr. Yaral, as far as giving the stipends or the extra, um, uh, increase for administration, House Bill three provided only the categories of teachers, librarians, nurses, and, um, librarians, nurses, teachers and nurses. I'm, uh, I'm repeating myself, but for tho, those four categories. As far as administration, sir, because of the deficit, uh, the deficit that we're in, we are not in any position to do that. Now, because the year has already began and we've made strides in reducing the expenditure, you asked us at the middle of the year, it requires us to do a financial analysis so that we can give you a better, um, finding of where we stand with our budget. I am trying my best to move this district, this, this district forward and I am held responsible. So I want to make sure that everybody understands that I am doing the best that I can. The administration and I have always come together to discuss programs and programs that will impact students and teachers. Our students are the ones that generate our revenue. Our teachers are the ones that have the major impact on student progress. These are the two important people that bring our revenues and we're here because of them. I'm not saying exclude everybody else. We're not in that position to make these kinds of decisions at the moment. Thank you.
Can I ask real quick?
Uh, Mr. Yaral, we're, uh, we're done with discussing the, uh, those items and, uh, we're gonna move on to section five, information proposals and superintendent and staff. Uh, item number one, recognition.
Teacher recognition.
Mr. President, members of the board, Ms. Garza. My name is Fred Marigo and I am the assistant principal for the Advanced Placement Program, which means that I go to all three high schools and supervise the AP teachers. Uh, I want to thank you on behalf of Dr. Trevino. I don't know, Dr. Trevino, if you wanna come up here. No? No? Okay. All right. Uh, I thank you for allowing us to showcase the AP program. If you look at your, in your, um, programs, there, there is a sheet with this information. Tonight, uh, we'd like to recognize Ms. Crystal Castellano. Okay? And I'll explain to you at the bottom of, of the sheet, this first sheet, I will, it'll explain why we're recognizing her. This last summer, Ms. Castellano was the very first teacher ever in the history of the Advanced Placement Program at Rio Grande City, uh, Independent School District to be an AP reader, okay? That's quite an accomplishment. And as it says here, these readers evaluate and score AP students' free response questions, ensuring that high school students receive AP grades that accurately reflect college-level achievement in specific disciplines. Each year in June, high school teachers and college faculty from around the world gather across the United States to participate on locations onsite as well as to score online from home. During the AP readings, readers will exchange ideas, score exams, uh, uh, using a rubric, okay? They get compensated, but what's even more important, if you'll bear with me, AP, AP readers gain an in-depth understanding of the AP exam so that they can better assess their own students' work. In a survey, over ninety-seven percent of returning high school AP readers and over seventy-two percent of returning higher ed AP readers said that they, that they made changes to the way they teach or score their work because of the experience as an AP reader. So they come back as better teachers because they have been able to grade essays from all around the world, and I mean around the world. Because anywhere there is an AP school, where, anywhere there are American students and American schools, they give this exam, okay? So Ms. Castellano, who teaches AP government and politics at Rio Grande City High School, like I said earlier, is the first AP reader at RGCC ISD to ever have read. It, it's not easy to be selected by the college board to be a reader. You have to apply and you have to show a lot of success, okay? So she, even though she teaches three AP classes and which is astonishing because she has three different preps, okay? She graded in one week, the first week of June, over eight hundred essays. And there were only three AP teachers from the Rio Grande Valley that were selected to be a reader and to grade AP government essays. On the back, if you will look, I have put Ms. Castellano's scores in all three of her subjects against the global scores, the Texas scores, and of course, her own scores. For instance, globally last year, three hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-five thousand students took the AP exam all over the world. Fifty-five percent of them passed. In Texas, thirty-five thousand, five hundred took the exam and forty-five percent passed. Ms. Gayat Castellano, she, thirty-one of, of her fifty students passed the exam for a, an average of sixty percent. And if you look across every subject area, almost in every subject area, she exceeds not only the global scores, but the Texas scores. And so we're very fortunate to have her teaching. She was my colleague and at one time, her husband, who was here with her, Mr. Castellano, who left our district unfortunately several years ago to become, uh, Idea Academy's, uh, head of social studies for all of their district. Um, I, and we don't want to lose her or many of the really, really good AP teachers that we have. And I know none of you want that to happen. And we appreciate the resources that you have given us and we hope that you continue to provide us with these, those type of resources, okay? And so on behalf of Mr. Trevino or Dr. Trevino and myself. Ms. Castellano? Mr. Mr. Penya? Some people would say it was a little bit of over, overkill, but I don't think so. Okay? And it reads, Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District recognizes Crystal Castellano for being the first educator within the RGCC ISD to have ever served as an AP reader for the college board for the two thousand eighteen nineteen academic year. We have Mr. Penya here, who is her principal.
Good evening, everyone. I guess I just want to say a few words. Congratulations, Ms. Castellano. It's an honor to actually teach with teachers of that caliber and it makes us very proud. And that's, uh, one of the occasions that, uh, will remind us that our culture needs to change within the campus and understand what the AP process is all about. But again, Ms. Castellano is not only a, a great teacher and, and is a reader for the college board, but, um, you would have to see it for yourself how she attracts our students, engages our students in the classroom. We talk about, you know, five E models and we talk about engaging students, direct teaching, indirect teaching. She's a perfect example of indirect teaching where she allows her students to become the teachers themselves and take the activities in charge. So again, again, I'm very proud of having her in our campus and then very proud of having her in our district. So I think we're all proud of her. Ms. Castellano, congratulations and thank you, everyone.
Ms. Castellano, thank you so much for your dedication and commitment and your passion for teaching. Thank you so much for your service.
Good evening, members of the board, board president and all that are present. At this time, we'd like to call Alma Penya, seventh grade student at Ace Middle School to please come forward with the STAR project. This is one, just one of our students shining again.
Hi, everyone. I'm Alma Penya and if we could please stop talking about politics just for a little bit? And talk about something that will benefit us all. I'm Alma Penya and I started the STAR project. It all started by a friend encouraging me to start recycling. And then I was at a community event and I talked to Mr. Yaral and I just asked him if there was a recycling center here at Starr County and he had said no and that they weren't gonna build one, future goals, three to four years. So that's when I had the idea to start a recycling project. I wanna say a week before school, I had talked to Ms. Yaral, the principal of AC two E Middle School, if I could start my project here and she was right off the back, real supportive. I had had, I put two bins in each hall and the first week, kids were a little, you know, confused, like, why is there a recycling bin here? But two to three weeks, uh, it was starting to become regular, having a hundred and fifty, fifty to two hundred bottles, just bottles each week, uh, calling my mom like, hey, gotta pick them up. To this day, I've collected more than a thousand five hundred plastic bottles plus, uh, extra plastic. I then went to Veterans Middle School with Mr. Cantu and I have one bin there and I plan to put two other bins. My first bins, I had bought four bins with my birthday money and then Ms. Yaral let me fundraise and I had gotten enough money to get, I wanna say, eight bins. I want bins in every single school here, but fundraising is really hard for me. I'm not taking serious because I'm a thirteen-year-old girl. They don't think I'm gonna take this anywhere, but I want it to grow and I want my community to have my back and I want the school district to have my back. STAR project is my project. Like I said, I'm a thirteen-year-old girl. Uh, it's just a plastic-only recycling project. It's very light and it's real, realistic. My dad had put my story out there to Channel Five News and they picked it up and they interviewed me and I got a lot of feedback, you know, uh, local businesses asking for bins and, uh, it made me very happy to know that there is people out there still trying to make the world better. Think global, act local. Help just by recycling, knowing that you are helping the world, but you're just starting off by helping your community. And I came here just to ask, you know, if the school district can help me and donate some bins. Thank you.
I wanna let the public know that I had the pleasure of visiting with Alma. Was very interested in her project, that I invited her to, um, send a bin to our superintendent's office and any other office. Um, I think it's a great project and I think that, um, it is time for us to recycle. Uh, I think our community is lacking on recycling and I know it's expensive, but it's a start. So I commend you, young lady, and thank you so much for sharing this project with us.
What's your name?
Alma Ruby Penya.
Alma Rosie Penya?
No, Ruby.
I'm impressed. You're very smart. You have a lot of courage and, uh, thank you for letting us know that. Hopefully, all of us can take your advice. Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am, on that note, I think that the school should be proactive and buy you the, all the bins that you need to put in every school. I think it's a fantastic project. There's an old story about, uh, a million starfishes being thrown at a beach and there was a gentleman throwing starfish back into the beach. Some guy says, well, why you, why you throwing it? It's only one or two starfish. He said, it may not be important to a bunch of starfishes that are out there, the nine, nine hundred, nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, but it's important for those three or four that I'm throwing back. And what I'm trying to say is things catch, catch fire. I think you've done an excellent job. I think the school should step up to the plate, buy you the bins that you needed, go talk to the superintendent and her buying whatever you need to put in every single facility that this school district has. Thank you.
I have one more thing I wanna say. Ms. Penya, I'm gonna call you Ms. Penya because it's like you're professional right now. I have, I, I've seen you grow into a wonderful young lady and a, a great entrepreneur. Sign me up for all my clinics and I promise that we will promote to make sure that we bring this to all our campuses. Please keep advocating for saving the world and being a role model for all our students. You make me so proud to sit up here right now. Thank you.
Good evening, board, uh, president, board members, uh, Superintendent Garza. This is Alma Penya and of course, you already heard her presentation. She was extremely convincing when she came to me. She was not as shy as she was right now. She was very, very convincing.
She was very, very convincing when she came to me the first week of school. And she did a great job. She's been recycling, and she's added a couple of other schools, and she's added a couple of businesses. Not only has Ford, Bogus Ford, picked her up also to go ahead and put her on their billboard. They're gonna go ahead and do that for her. And other companies have contacted her in order for her to continue with the bins. She started with gray bins, and now she switched to black bins, and she's just growing it. She really is. She's growing it, and she's growing it amazingly, and she's doing an awesome job. It's just one of the little programs that we're doing, and she is excellent at it.
So who's the mom?
Mrs. Stella. Mrs. Stella Penya, she's right there. She would like to be...
I was super proud.
Yes. They go twice a week to McAllen to go drop off all the recycling bins. Yes, it is a lot of work. So thank you, Alma. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Real Grandi City CISD Campus Teachers of the Month. We'd like to recognize the January month of 2020. At this time, can I ask our board members to please help us by coming over to the left-hand side so we can go ahead and congratulate each Teacher of the Month? Ms. Adelina Vareal will introduce the Campus Teachers of the Month.
Can we include Ms. Castellano as well to pass...
Sure. Yes, ma'am, and our superintendent. Thank you. Ms. Castellano, if you could please join us.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, and respectable audience. Going back to item number one, RGCC ISD is pleased to announce the January Teachers of the Month. Teachers play an important role in the lives of our children, their families, and the communities. The following teachers selected per each campus have shown excellence in the classroom and many other areas. For example, motivation to achieve for all their students, leadership skills, dedication, imagination, and creativity. This evening, we are honored to inform the RGCC ISD School Board that the following teachers are deserving of such recognition. And on behalf of the School Board, the staff, administration, and community, we express our sincerest gratitude for their outstanding performance each and every day. Thank you for being such amazing teachers and for all that you do to make lifelong impacts on all our students. Your words of wisdom guide them and give them courage to pursue their dreams. Your imprint will live forever in their hearts, in their minds, and therefore, tonight, we honor you. The following teachers will be recognized. Ace Elementary, Erica Solis. Alberto and Selia Barrera Elementary, Adrian Garcia. Alto Bonito Elementary, Juan M. Garcia. Doctor Mario I. Ramirez Elementary, Daniel Sainz. General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary, Ana Martinez. Gruya Elementary, Araceli Olivares. John and Olive Nina Jose Elementary, Adanelia Garcia. La Unión Elementary, Cristina Rodriguez. Ringgold Elementary, Diana Lopez. Roque Guerra Junior Elementary, Lori Chapa. Ace Middle School, Delia Garza. Gruya Middle School, Maria I. Orta. Ringgold Middle School, Diana Salinas. Veterans Middle School, Claribel Solis. Early College High School, Polycarpio Corona. Gruya High School, Abigail Seal. Real Grandi City High School, Ariel Lynn. Alternative Center, Emery T. Veloso. And the AP teacher, Cristo Castellano, Real Grandi City High School. This concludes our honorees for tonight. Congratulations.
Can we have the teachers up front so we can take a group picture?
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent. The Wyatt Ranch Foundation donated twenty thousand dollars to Real Grandi City Consolidated Independent School District for school safety initiatives. Real Grandi City CISD has adopted and implemented a multi-hazard emergency operations plans for use in the district's facilities. It addresses mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery as defined by the Commissioner of Education in conjunction with the Governor's Office of Homeland Security. RGCC ISD's plan includes, but not limited to, the following: classroom door locking mechanisms, campus barricades, bulletproof screens for campus windows, metal detectors, security cameras, radios, and safety training. Safe Schools promotes the promotion, the protection of students from violence, exposure to weapons and threats, theft, bullying, and the sale or use of illegal substances on school grounds. School safety is linked to improved student and school outcomes. In particular, emotional and physical safety in school are related to academic performance. At the same time, students who are victims of physical or emotional harassment, or who are involved in the sale or use of illegal substances on school grounds are at risk for poor attendance, course failure, and dropout. RGCC ISD would like to thank the Wyatt Ranch Foundation for their generous contribution for school safety initiatives.
Well, good evening. Thank you very much. We wanted to do this because, as she mentioned, we believe in safe schools, and we believe in education, and we believe in investment for our youth. So thank you for allowing us to do this and be part of your community, and we appreciate it.
At this time, thank you so much, Mr. Wyatt. If we could have the board members take a picture with the gentleman so that we can go ahead and recognize you for your generous contribution. Thank you. And also, after this picture, I would like for Alma to join us so that we can take a picture with Alma.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, items number one through fourteen.
Can I amend that and just say approve item also on...
There, sir. Mr. Vareal, you made a motion, Dr. B.
Yes, sir. Items number one through fourteen.
There's a motion by Dr. B., a second by Mrs. Lopez. Any discussion?
Yes. I have a couple of questions on the five thousand dollar and over, Ms. Robles. This is Robles, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
So, real quickly, on the five thousand dollars and over that we have, are those only five thousand dollars and over that we have?
Yes. For this month, yes. It was a short, two weeks.
I had discussed with you the idea of the contract with the attorney. Board policy says five thousand dollars and over has to appear here, and it hasn't appeared here in the last couple of agendas.
Yes, sir.
Let me finish. And the contract was never brought back to us. Basically, the motion was to iron out... Let me finish. Let me finish. I'm talking to Ms. Robles. It's to iron out a contract, and it's not a legal contract.
Wherein the agenda... Wherein the agenda...
Okay, I'm discussing. I'm discussing why an item on the $5,000 is not here. That's what I'm discussing. It's pertaining to this agenda.
Mr. Montalvo?
Yes, sir.
Does any contracts... Does any contracts have to be here presented on every board meeting on the $5,000 and over?
If I may interrupt...
Go ahead.
After the last board meeting and after being called to our attention that the agreement with Mr. Rene Montalvo was not... Or there was a claim that it was not board-approved, I did consult with legal, with AICOBAM. I sent him an email, Ms. Garza and I. Before the email, we truly believed that we were delegated the authority. The video, the motion says so. So, the response to my email from AICOBAM, do you want me to read it, or...
Ma'am, you were not delegated the authority. The motion was simply put, let me finish, was to iron out an agreement, not to delegate.
I want to hear the emails, ma'am.
Ms. Robles Mendez, and this is from Eric Muñoz from AICOBAM. Ms. Robles Mendez, this question essentially comes down to the Board's intent on adopting the motion at the 10-14-19 meeting, as well as the meaning of a board policy. These are both issues of interpretation. So if there is a question about them, only the Board can decide. I'll give you my opinion below, but I want to stress that my opinion does not speak for the Board or bind them to any particular decision. Only the Board can make a conclusive decision. I've reviewed the video, and the transcription of the motion is as follows. Board President, item number two, discussion, consideration, and possible action on naming a new board attorney. Do we have a motion on item number two? Trustee Garcia, at this time, I move that we name Mr. Rene Montalvo as our new legal counsel on the condition that he meet with the Board President and our Superintendent and our CFO to iron out the agreement, and also to be relayed as information to our or all Board members. You've informed me that the President, Superintendent, and CFO did in fact meet with the attorney, and that resulted in a signed agreement, which was subsequently shared with all trustees. Looking solely at language in the motion and the discussion on this item at the board meeting, I think it is reasonable to interpret the motion as granting authority to sign a contract, especially if the trustees saw the signed contract and did not raise an issue upon being shown the signed contract. Could someone argue the opposite? Sure. Also, any trustee could argue that their understanding of the motion was different. The next question is this. Even if the Board did delegate authority to sign the contract, is the administration required to present each payment under the agreement for board approval? That comes down to a matter of local preference. Some districts present bills to their Board every month. Others don't. Policy CHLoco refers to purchases. This is a local policy, so the language means whatever the word the Board wants it to mean. You've informed me that the district has the following consistent practice. If an agreement is board-approved, we start paying according to the terms in the agreement without taking a requisition for board approval. I think this practice is reasonably consistent with CHLoco. But again, someone can make an argument that it is not. That's just the nature of these types of issues. If a trustee that has raised the complaint wants a definite answer, he or she may seek to have this placed on an agenda for discussion and action. Additionally, the administration may seek clarification of the Board's desire going forward. Please note that this discussion is solely based on your email in the discussion of this item at the board meeting. Context can play a big role in these issues. The district's past practices, as well as previous discussions among the Board, may shed a different light on things. I also have not reviewed the contract. If a trustee has a specific complaint about a provision in the contract, we would have to review. And that was it.
Would it be fair to say that we're paying him either $10,500 or $12,500? What are we paying him?
I believe it's $12,500.
$500? Okay, thank you.
We have a motion by Dr. B., and a second by Mrs. Lopez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All opposed? Nobody's opposed? Only you, Mr. Varell? Only Mr. Varell opposed?
No, he agreed.
No, he agreed.
Two agree.
They all agreed.
They all agreed because one of them didn't say anything.
They all agreed to pass all the items.
Motion carries.
Is the meeting over?
We can only stay and discuss, but since we don't have a quorum, maybe we can wait to see if they come back. They come back, maybe? We can discuss, but we cannot make any motions or votes. I apologize, ladies and gentlemen, again. We're gonna try to wait a few minutes to see if we have a quorum. Mr. Montalvo, they're telling me that they left, so how can we adjourn the meeting if we don't have quorum?
All right. Mr. President, because we have a lack... Because we do not have a quorum, it appears that we no longer have a quorum for an open session to continue. The meeting must stop because we have no more quorum for an open session to continue.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, sir?
Please use this, everybody. We're trying to figure out how to conduct the ending of the meeting. We really appreciate your patience.
I'm sorry. By the way, I'm assuming they've left the premises.
They're telling me that they did.
If they've left the premises, then it's over for a lack of a quorum and open session.
So how can we adjourn the meeting if we don't have quorum?
Effectively, it's for lack of a quorum, we can't do anything anymore. Officially, no.
So we officially can't close the meeting?
No.
Okay. On behalf of the remaining Board members, I would like to say I'm very sorry. As a person elected to represent you, and especially such a beautiful young lady who was here tonight, who I'm so proud of, I stand very embarrassed that this is the way in which we conduct your business. This is the way we represent your tax dollars. I am speechless. You gave us one duty. Our duty is to conduct these meetings on your behalf every month. And at this point, I don't think anyone has ever seen something to this kind of display. It's unprofessional. It's unethical. So again, apologies, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.